Good evening, welcome to the March 20th, 2023 Troy City Council Meeting. Please rise this evening for our invocation and remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance. We give you thanks, Father in Heaven, for the blessings you've given each and every one of us and for all that you've done to make our city and our world such a wonderful place. We ask that you continue to bless us this evening as we work through this agenda in the Detroit City Council Meeting, ask that you be with all of our residents who are here in person, who are watching and who are out in the city enjoying and living their lives. We ask that you give us the grace to make wise decisions and have good, meaningful conversations as we do the business of the city. We ask that you bless the high school students that are here this evening, thanking them and appreciating them for the hard work they've done in our community and helping them continue to grow in their education here in Troy and become wonderful members of society. We ask that you be with our first responders, our police and firefighters, our emergency medical technicians, our Public Works Department, as they do the important work of keeping our city safe and making sure all of our residents and businesses have the tools they need to live in the safest city in Michigan. We ask that you be with each and every one of us this evening and also those who are out in our community who need your help. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll call the March 20th, 2023 Troy City Council Meeting to order and ask for the roll call from Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Brooks?
Here.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Here.
Mayor, sorry, Mayor Protam Chamberlain Kranga, Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Technically, Ellen, you're here, but you're not here for roll call purposes. You see, Councilmember Ellen Hoderick is in via Zoom this evening. She will be able to participate in discussion, but she will not be able to participate in any voting this evening. So I need to also move that Troy City Council hereby excuses the absence, in-person absence of Councilmember David Hamilton as well as Ellen Hoderick at the regular City Council meeting of March 20th, 2023 due to being out of the county.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, supported by Mayor Protam Chamberlain Kranga, that we approve and excuse the absences of Councilmember David Hamilton and Ellen Hoderick as read in the record and printed in the Agenda Packet. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Motion carries. First up are certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have three of them this evening. Number one, C1, is a proclamation and recognition of Athens High School 2022 to 23 Student Council, and I'll be presenting that proclamation myself, so I'll ask that you students meet me down at the podium and face out, okay? Thanks for directing traffic, Mr. DeFrain. You know what you're doing. You better. We can spread out, yeah, we can spread out. Should've worn a red tie, I apologize in advance. Students, I'm really excited to have you here this evening. Obviously, you play a huge role in our community. Charity Week is a big deal. I talked about it earlier on in the year from the council table. I was there when you did the big reveal back in February. I can't believe it's been that long already. And I'm really excited tonight to present this proclamation, read into the record, and let the public also again hear all the good news, okay? So let me read this first. So this is a proclamation and recognition of Athens High School 2022 to 23 Student Council. Whereas the Athens High School Student Council is very active and dedicated group of 53 students and one advisor, Mr. DeFrain, committed to giving back to their community as well as the region. And whereas each year the Athens Student Council puts in countless hours as well as blood, sweat, and tears to help raise money for a charity of their choice during Charity Week. Charity Week is all about generosity, activism, collaboration, and service leadership. Students have fun and make meaningful memories while giving of themselves to the benefit of others. And whereas the Athens High Student Council selected Carols, Angels, and Warriors, a local organization founded in 2021 in response to a growing need for support and resources for victims and survivors of trauma. In addition, this group advocates for change in the areas of public safety, mental health, and financial stability. By choosing Carols, Angels, and Warriors, Athens Student Council hopes to raise awareness about this serious issue. And whereas this year, the Athens High Student Council gave back in a way that many teens and even most adults could not do by organizing a full week of activities, including carnival night, ice skating, jail and bail, belly flop contest, hypnosis show, pancake breakfast, coin stalls in the classrooms, film festival, parent cook-off, restaurant nights, volleyball tournament, Mr. Athens pageant, Jordan Cruz, Mr. Athens, right here, he happens to be here, pep rally, dance, euchre tournament for parents, and an espresso yourself talent show. And whereas, Athens High Student Council raised $115,184.24 for Carols, Angels, and Warriors. This comes on top of 2022 where $117,706.46 was raised for Alex's Saints Foundation and a school record in 2020 of $180,024.40 for Ellie's House, $130,035.71 in 2019 for Focus Detroit. I wasn't kidding when I talk about impact. They do a great job. That's a half a million dollars from right there, just in the past few years. That's amazing. Whereas, the Athens Student Council generates excitement throughout the school's 1,600 students as well as within the community. Student Council meetings take place prior to school starting, and after a full day of classes, members stay after school to count the money raised from the day's activities, set up for the night events, run those events, and then go home to complete their homework. There is not a lot of sleep for student Council members during Charity Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Troy City Council extends special recognition to the Athens High Student Council for their selfless and tireless service and dedication to so many worthwhile organizations over the years. And be it further resolved that the Troy City Council and all of Troy's residents congratulate the Athens High Student Council for being a shining example of how to give back to the community as well as the region, and wish all of the Athens High School students continued success in all future endeavors. This proclamation is presented this 20th day of March 2023. It's signed by myself as the mayor. All members of our Troy City Council have signed it. Maddie? I'm gonna give it to you.
Okay.
She's the president, right?
Yeah.
She's the president, so I'm gonna let her have it. You say congratulations, everybody. You're all worthy, of course, but Maddie's here, my love, make good sense. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's get a group picture and I'd love for you to say a few words.
Wait, what with Mr. DeFrain's?
Maddie, please, share a few words. We'd love to have you here from you.
Yeah, we're really excited to be here. Thank you so much for having us. It's really special. Running something like this and being able to be a part of something like this, I would say it's special in the school and it's also really special to see the community involvement and the community impact. We would like to thank our administration, the school district, and of course, the city of Troy. There are so many events where we have members of the city coming in, parents, students at elementary schools, just community members who are passionate about giving back to their community. And seeing the way that Charity Week brings Troy together as a whole is, I think, probably the most important part about Charity Week, just the culture of giving back that we have here in Troy.
Obviously, the pandemic changed the things. Some of you, I mean, you missed two years essentially of doing Charity Week, and it looks like you picked up right where we used to be. So you guys are really awesome and congratulations on that. And really also, like you said about our community, so many people went into this event. Obviously, you organize and work so hard, but a lot of our restaurants, a lot of our families gave so much, and it really is a testament to how wonderful Troy is and what a great community. I thank everybody, I thank the public also for all their commitment to these amazing student council representatives to the school and of course, to the charities that they support. So thank you all. And next, who's the senior this year?
I'm a senior.
You're all seniors?
Yes, I'm a senior.
You're all seniors, right? Okay. Then none of you will be back next year. But anyway, we appreciate you. Thank you so much and congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. The ones that are staying clearly have AP government and need to get something signed. Good job, miss. All right. Next up, the C2 Troy Community Coalition 2023 report. I'm excited that we have our Troy Community Coalition Executive Director Nancy Morrison here this evening. Good evening, Nancy.
Good evening, Mayor Baker and council members. Like Mayor Baker said, I'm Nancy Morrison. I am the Executive Director of the Troy Community Coalition for the Prevention of Drug and Alcohol Abuse. And I am honored to be here this evening to provide an update about the Troy Community Coalition. I'll start with our addiction awareness prevention program. This takes place in the health classes every semester, and we address issues such as vaping, prescription drugs, heroin, marijuana, fentanyl, and alcohol. And we utilize people in long-term recovery who share their stories from addiction to recovery. And we reach close to 600 high school students every year with this program. And then we are busy, we always visit the alcohol and tobacco retailers in Troy. We will start visiting 53 of them this month and through April. And we just provide them with educational material so that they do not sell alcohol or tobacco products to our youth. And we have actually established quite a good relationship with the retailers because they have children themselves. And then we visit all the fourth grade classes in the Troy School District with our Choose Wisely Prevention Program, and this is in partnership with the city of Troy. And we talk about responsible behavior. We talk about who is affected by your behavior, and then of course, consequences of behavior. And we reach close to 1,000 students with this prevention program. And then we have our Family Day. Research was showing us that when families literally sit down and have a meal and have a discussion with their children, they are less likely to abuse drugs and alcohol. So we partnered with some businesses in Troy to provide a discount, and it's normally held the last Monday in September. And then we have our incredible kid recognition. This year, over 70 students were nominated by adults in the community, and these children have all made a positive impact in our community. So we visit their houses and deliver their yard signs, and then we have certificates of recognition as well. And then we have our Parents Who Host Lose the Most campaign. We partner with different businesses to put up yard signs, and again, just to make parents aware that it is illegal to host a teenage drinking party. And some of our yard signs are also in residential neighborhoods as well. And then we are back to visiting alcohol retailers with our Project Sticker Shock, and we try and do this prior to prom and graduation season. And we adhere these bright orange stickers to the multi-packs of alcohol to warn people if they do buy alcohol to minors there are legal consequences. It's definitely illegal. And then we'll have, this will be our 27th annual summer camp. It is structured, so we do implement a lot of prevention programming. We partner with the police department a lot. Near the end of the camp, we hold a dodgeball tournament and invite police officers and firefighters to come. So it's always a special day. So if any of you are looking to play dodgeball, we have a spot for you. So we provide field trips and yoga and just a well-rounded bunch of activities for these youth during our four-week summer camp. And then we partner with Corwell Health for Tahr Wars. So the resident physicians come to all the Troy School District elementary schools, and we present this anti-tobacco program to the fifth graders. And we reach close to 1,000 children with this program as well. And then we will be hosting a parent marijuana forum, and that's going to be held on Wednesday, April 12th at 7:00 PM in the Troy School District Services Center, and that's going to be at 7 o'clock. And then I just wanted to thank the city of Troy and the police department for your support.
Thank you, Nancy. We should be thanking you for all you're doing for our community, and it's good to see you in person. And I want to know if anyone on council has any questions for you today. Opening up the floor. If you do have a question, I meant to remind you at the beginning of the meeting, speak well into these mics as we're working with our new sound. I want to make sure everybody can hear, so keep that in mind. Any questions? All right. We know how to find you, Nancy, if we need to. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That concludes C2. Next up is C3. It's a pavilion update, and that'll be presented by our Public Works Director Kurt Bovency.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Couple hard acts to follow. It's been about four months since I stood at this podium and talked about the pavilion, so I thought it'd be a good opportunity to kind of provide an update where we're at and what direction we're moving towards. You know, since my 20-plus career here, we've always talked about parks and leisure services and green space. And going back more recently, in 2016, there was an attempt to do a redevelopment here at Civic Center, and the residents spoke out against that. And consequently, in 2017, a referendum that ultimately failed, but it was proof that the residents of Troy, the majority of residents of Troy, really didn't want the Civic Center to be redeveloped into anything but civically used property. And that's where I want to kind of tell this story, because every time I bring this project up in the community, there is so much community engagement and so much behind this project. Most people want to know how they can get involved, how they can be a part of the project. And part of this is the story behind how we got to where we're at today, I think, is why this project is being so successful in the community, is because it wasn't done in a vacuum. It's been years and years in work. And the Green Space Subcommittee was part of that. In 2018, which was a committee, a subcommittee of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, they put together several very talented and dedicated people that first and foremost defined what green space was to them, and that was very important. And then we looked at green space throughout the city, and part of that final report, after six months of work, was an opinion given on the Civic Center. And it was, the opinion was to keep the Civic Center, again, civically orientated and to really develop it into more of a central park, a central location, since we do lack a traditional downtown in the community. So as we fast forward to 2019, the Troy Community Foundation approached the city of Troy and wanted to do something big. They were gaining some funds, and they wanted to do something really, really impactful. And we came up with the pavilion idea. This was researched through using Sterling Heights, who had recently completed their pavilion project. The renderings were actually done by Kumar Guri's wife, Nikki. So she put this together. Her family's an architect. And this is really important a part of the story, because this is what we used for the, what we supplied to Congresswoman Haley Stevens to eventually get the community project funding. So this was really the catalyst of the project. So if you remember, we looked at the open space on the old Troy High School, knowing that the pavilion, it was a great idea, but it was very costly. And it's not something that the Troy Community Foundation had funds immediately, so we really had to grow the idea. And this was an attempt to grow the ideas. Take this unused space and make it very versatile, make it programmable to almost any use, and most importantly, make it expandable. Make sure that this project, the Stein Community Park, could be expanded one day, hopefully including the pavilion. So going through the process, obviously, we named the community park after Jean Stein. I remember the groundbreaking ceremony. I think most of you were there, and I think it was someone who suggested, and Jeannie was there, you know, she was such an advocate for keeping the Civic Center to civic use that the park being named after. And obviously, eventually, council did adopt that, the recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. It's interesting, in past presentations to other organizations, I play the video, but this is of the actual rendering that we built the park off of. And if you look, I mean, this was before the park was built. It's built very, very similar outside of the pedestrian bridge that leads to the south. OHM did a great job with their renderings and then the construction documents to follow that. And the space has been really successful and engaging. I think most people know that we hosted the Troy Farmer's Market, the movies in the park. Oftentimes, people just walk around in the park, see people doing yoga in the park. Again, the whole intent of this space was to be versatile and to be able to accommodate almost any type of programming that we can have. So like I mentioned, we were successful in the call for projects from Councilwoman, Congresswoman Haley Stevens. We did submit a one and a half million dollar grant, looking back. You know, this was, this was in, I think, around 2021, looking back with new inflation. We probably would have put in a little bit more, but we were successful in this, and we're very grateful for this funding. So this means we actually had to get to work. We were awarded the funding, and now we actually had to do some design work. And this was done with a lot of engagement with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee was involved with this. And first and foremost, we looked at location, the different areas that could support this that would abut or be part of the Stein Community Park. And working with OHM, and if you don't know me, I love guiding principles. We like these principles to be able to always go back to, to make sure that we're on the right path. And here are some of the ones that we really worked towards to activate the pavilion space. And it was done in a fashion that activating the space needed to be visible to anyone driving by. So we started concentrating on the corner of Civic Center and Town Center Drive, and we started positioning how the ice rink could look and how the pavilion would be placed. A lot of effort went into these concept designs, and ultimately led to designing the position and looking at other pavilions for inspirational inspiration to see how our pavilion could look. We looked at a lot of consistency through nature, which is the same theme we're using down at the DDA re-landscaping effort. We knew that we did not want a traditional ice skating rink. We have a Troy Sports Center. That's where people go to play hockey. We weren't advocating for this to be a sports arena. We wanted it to be more of a recreational opportunity and a gathering space for everyone. And really activate it four seasons as well. So here's just some renderings. As we looked, as we started designing the pavilion, you can see that it was at one time enclosed. That was in response to our, that was in response to our engagement with other communities that have pavilions, that they had wished they had enclosed theirs. So that was actually some of our findings. But as we worked through cost analysis and other things throughout the area, we realized that, you know, enclosing that space would limit its opportunities for programming. It really would create a communal space that couldn't be shared throughout the entire space. So meaning that if you needed to warm up, you would go inside instead of going to one of the fire pits. So we thought that, not only for cost reasons, but also for our guiding principles, that we opened the pavilion back up and did not enclose it. So we landed here. You can see that the ice skating ribbon that's mimicked off of Chicago's, several fire pits, pavilion, and that pavilion space could probably seat about 175 to 200 comfortably. Different activities can happen there. And the ice skating ribbon could be many different things throughout the summer, spring, and fall outside of the ice skating season. And then I know I've shown this several times, but here's the, some renderings that OHM did. And then a quick video that OHM put together as a fly-through through the space. we host the Troy Farmer's Market, the movies in the park. Oftentimes, people just walk around in the park, see people doing yoga in the park. Again, the whole intent of this space was to be versatile and to be able to accommodate almost any type of programming that we can have. So like I mentioned, we were successful in the call for projects from Councilwoman, Congresswoman Haley Stevens. We did submit a one and a half million dollar grant, looking back. You know, this was, this was in, I think, around 2021. Looking back with new inflation, we probably would have put in a little bit more. But we were successful in this and we're very grateful for this funding. So this means we actually had to get to work. We were awarded the funding, and now we actually had to do some design work. And this was done with a lot of engagement with the Troy, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee was involved with this. And first and foremost, we looked at location, the different areas that could support this that would abut or be part of the Stein Community Park. And working with OHM, and if you don't know me, I love guiding principles. We like these principles to be able to always go back to, to make sure that we're on the right path. And here are some of the ones that we really worked towards to activate the pavilion space. And it was done in a fashion that activating the space needed to be visible to anyone driving by. So we started concentrating on the corner of Civic Center and Town Center Drive. And we started positioning how the ice rink could look and how the pavilion would be placed. A lot of effort went into these, these concept designs and ultimately led to designing the position and looking at other pavilions for inspirational, inspiration to see how our pavilion could look. We looked at a lot of consistency through nature, which is the same theme we're using down at the DDA relandscaping effort. We knew that we did not want a traditional ice skating rink. We have a Troy Sports Center. That's where people go to play hockey. We weren't advocating for this to be a sports arena. We wanted it to be more of a recreational opportunity and a gathering space for everyone. And really activate it four seasons as well. So here's just some renderings. As we looked, as we started designing the pavilion, you can see that it was at one time enclosed. That was in response to our, that was in response to our engagement with other communities that have pavilions, that they had wished they had enclosed theirs. So that was actually some of our findings. But as we worked through cost analysis and other things throughout the area, we realized that, you know, enclosing that space would limit its opportunities for programming. It really would create a communal space that couldn't be shared throughout the entire space. So, meaning that if you needed to warm up, you would go inside instead of going to one of the, one of the fire pits. So we thought that, not only for cost reasons, but also for our guiding principles, that we opened the pavilion back up and did not enclose it. So we landed here. You can see that the ice skating ribbon that's mimicked off of Chicago's, several fire pits, pavilion. And that pavilion space could probably seat about 175 to 200 comfortably. Different activities can happen there. And the ice skating ribbon could be many different things throughout the summer, spring, and fall, outside of the ice skating And then I know I've shown this several times, but here's the, some renderings that OHM I know it was a bit long, but it really, really highlights all the effort that's been put in over the last several months. The level of detail, not only into the finishes with this project, to make sure that the finishes are nice and Troy-worthy, if you will. And then the amount of effort that has gone into the actual design, all the way to making sure that the fire pits, it can become a communal space. It's inclusive. Anyone bearing disabilities can participate in all these activities. I don't think I've ever been part of a project that has spent so much time on considering all those factors. So, and I think, I think the video does a good job highlighting that. And if you remember back in November, which was the last time I presented this project at the podium here, you, council awarded a contract with Service to get going on the ice rink. And they are moving very well on that. We did get through design documents and we let this project. And we had three general contractors bid on this project. And they did go through a process. It wasn't just solely based on price. A lot of it was based on the qualifications, their project approach, the history and the capabilities. This project is a little unique because it's what they called mass timbers. That pavilion is all, is a wood structure. And it's all very unique, custom, a lot of custom things. In fact, in one of our last design meetings, someone had mentioned, like, well, I can't point to anywhere else. I can't show you anywhere else where this is. I can't give an example. I'm like, perfect. That's what we're going for. We want this to be unique to Troy. So we went through that process and we did technically not award the contract to CE Gleason, but CE Gleason was the contractor that scored the highest. And members of CE Gleason are here today, if you had any specific questions on their project approach. And here's some of their highlights. They did do the Sterling Heights Community Center, which is probably, probably the closest, you know, neighboring community as far as municipality work goes. They build, I think, every LA fitness throughout the country. So they, they're very well known. They're a national contractor, Troy-based. And I think that's one of the reasons why they bid this so competitively, because they haven't done any large projects like this for the city that they call home. So as we go through, here is the cost. It is, it is higher than the budgeted $6.5 million, but I will remind that we do have some funding, like I mentioned, the community project funding. We are using $4 million in ARPA funding, and there are proposed $3.9 million for the capital. And you may be asking, well, Kurt, it looks like you're ready to go. Why aren't you coming for an award? And why is this just a presentation? It's that darn $1.5 million. So that is, that federal fund is being funded through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. There is a lot of things that we have to do in order to do what's, we can't do a choice limiting decision before the environmental, before everything is settled with the feds. We are typically not direct recipients of HUD funding. The closest thing would be the community block grant funding that we receive, but that's actually all handled through the county. So this is a little unique to the city of Troy, where for the first time, at least in my career, we're going to become direct recipients. And it has been a challenge to get through all of the federal requirements to actually be able to spend 15% of the cost of this project. Currently, right now, we're in what's called environmental stage. And that's not just physical environment. That's not impacts to the physical environment. That's also going through the state historic preservation. We actually had to make contacts with several indigenous tribes, including ones in Wisconsin. So they have a 30-day window to make comment on this project. So that is why I'm not bringing an award to you tonight, is because we are still going through that process. However, Gleason is on board, and there's some backend stuff we can start doing. And I'm hopeful that with the energy here tonight, that Gleason recognizes that this project is going to go forward. We just have a little bit more paperwork to do, and then we can bring, bring an award to you. Depending on the, the environmental review and some of the delays that that has caused, we are still shooting for a December completion. But depending on some of those delays, if we're two months out from actually making an award, that we may have to push that back a little bit. So again, Chris Ozak with OHM is here. He was their project architect. And we have members of Gleason, if you had any questions for them, or of course, any questions for me. But very exciting time, very exciting project.
Thank you, Kurt. I appreciate that. I'll try to bring up my energy level to show my enthusiasm for this project, which is, I've made very clear over the past couple of years at this point. I have to tell you, I've seen this presentation, or a version of this presentation, a lot, different places in the community. And I, it gets better and better in me every time. I really am excited about this project, understanding that I wish we were awarding the project tonight. I would be an enthusiastic yes. I don't know if I'm supposed to say that or not, but I would be. And I just know, I appreciate, again, Kurt, your consistent presentations on this. The, and a couple of things you highlighted that I think are really important for everyone to remember. This was not a new idea that came to the city of Troy in the past couple of years. This is something the community has been talking about for 20 years, if not more. And it is really gratifying to be able to see the amount of community involvement and engagement to get to this point, to get to this level. And to, I mean, first, you were at the Rotary Club a couple of weeks ago. And I've seen you at other places presented as well. And to see the diversity of people who you're presenting to, they all say, have the same positive reaction. And people wanting to get involved in this project and jumping on board and doing what they can to support it and be a part of it. I think that's a, a good, a good sounding board. It shows that we're headed in the right direction with this project. Again, I wish we were awarding it maybe a couple of months ago, so we could guarantee it was by December 1st. But I don't have any questions myself tonight. And I just realize I'm trying to source some energy and talking and talking. But any questions from council? We do have Gleason here. It's funny, I'm not used to talking to somebody who's not actually on the agenda tonight. So if I don't ask you any specific questions, don't take it personally, please. I see your work. You've done a great job. I wish that, again, like, we were awarding that contract tonight. But any questions or comments? Councilmember Hoderick?
I just wanted to echo a few of your comments there with a really wonderful statement that I heard a citizen say at the presentation of this project to the Troy Rotary Club. I dropped in that day just to see how folks would receive this, what, what their take was on it. And one of the Rotarians was listening to the conversation, hearing answers to questions. And she's, she raised her hand and she said, I am just so happy to be living in Troy right now, to see, you know, what's coming down the pipeline. And it was a very sincere, very enthusiastic response. And I remember thinking, I wish everyone could see this. And when you do talk about this project out and about with residents, they are very excited about it. And they understand how it fits into many of the freshening projects that are coming down the pipeline in Troy that people are looking for and wishing that we would do. They see the fit and they're very enthusiastic. So I am, each time I see this too, I become more excited. And what really excites me is, as Mr. Bovensee said, it fits with what the community has long wanted and consistently wants for our Civic Center property. And I'm really glad to see it coming together. Hopefully, the paperwork will not become a hindrance to us moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Hoderick. Anyone else? Mayor Protam Chamberlain-Krengga.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have to say, Kurt, and you know this, this is probably the most talked about project in our city right now. And I've been proud to brag about it with Michigan Municipal League and with our colleagues. And something I've talked about is the way in which it's not just providing a recreational opportunity. This is a way, it's called like these bridging relations. You bring our diverse community together by, whether it's ice skating, or picnicking, or being around a fireplace. So it's building relationships. And so I think that's what's beautiful about it. And just want to say, Gleason, congratulations. I am so proud that we get to work with a local Troy, Michigan construction firm. So very excited to hear about that.
As soon as we award the contract.
Yes, 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 yes.
Let's be very clear what we are not doing this evening, right?
Right, right.
Yes, I'm right there with you.
Thank you.
All right. I think that's it. Thank you, Kurt. Thank you, Gleason. Look forward to seeing you in the future. That concludes certificates of recognition and special presentations this evening. There are no carryover items. Next up are public hearings. E1 is a public hearing. We have one this evening. It's preliminary site plan review, file number SP 2022-0027, proposed estates at Eckford One Family Residential Cluster, south side of Eckford, west of Rochester. Parcel's 88-20-15-252-028-002-036-037-004-005. Section 15, currently zoned R1C, one family residential district. That'll be introduced by our community development director. Good evening, Brent.
Good evening, Mayor Baker, City Council. Some of you, while Kurt Bovensee was giving an outstanding presentation, may have saw me over to my left talking to the city clerk. The city clerk texted me at the beginning of this meeting and told me that there was no one that had signed up for public note, for a public comment, which raised a red flag to me because I knew there were some neighbors who expressed interest in this project. So I went back to my office and I checked. And we did not notify as per our policy. We have a somewhat confusing, but effective process in Troy. So state law requires us to notify by mail and within, everyone within 300 feet, as well as notify in the paper for Planning Commission public hearings. It's not a legal requirement as per the, the State Enabling Act, but for policy, this is, that's what we do. And the expectation, rightfully so of the neighbors, is that we provide notice both in the paper and by mailing. And we did not do that. So the responsibility, I oversee the department, the responsibility is mine. I stand here humbled and embarrassed. But I don't think, I think the expectation on behalf of the neighbors is that they would have an opportunity to come before you properly notified. And we were not able to do that. So I respectfully ask that we consider this item at the next available city council meeting and properly notify.
Sounds good to me, Brent. I couldn't agree with you more. Do we need to take any, we don't need to take any action? Just, do we ignore it? Just move on?
We're gonna, sorry. Well, we're gonna do the notice for the April 10th meeting and make sure it gets published and mailed out.
Okay. Mr. I mean, you talk to the petitioner and let them know that that was gonna happen.
I did. He was understanding, not, not real thrilled with me, but understanding. The good news is, we've, we've did the Q and A and answered council questions. I've got a 20, 20-slide PowerPoint that's ready to go. And we just have to notify properly so the residents have an opportunity to participate.
I appreciate that, and I bet they will too. Thank you. Sidney Mender Miller.
This is weird. This is a question for community involvement director.
Pick up the mic, please.
I was just complaining I couldn't hear everything at council. But this is weird because I'm asking Mr. Savadon a question. The Planning, Zoning and Enabling Act requires notification timing requirements?
Yes.
Our policy, do we follow those same requirements of so many days? I forget how many days?
Yeah, we try to. It's, we do our best.
Okay. But we have almost three weeks, so we should be able to accomplish it.
Correct.
Okay, good.
And I've already apologized to the developers engineer. Doesn't happen very often. Again, it's embarrassing, but we got to get it right.
No, I agree. And I was a little surprised when I didn't see some of the neighbors. So that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up is public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I don't see that anybody has signed up this evening, so there's no need for council or administration reply. We don't have any postponed items, so we'll move on to regular business. I want his board and committee appointments, mayoral appointments. There are none this evening. I will turn it over to Mayor Protam Chamberlain-Krengga, because we do have some city.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a number of them. So to start, I'd like to move the appointment of Tina Katron to the Animal Control Appeal Board for the term expiring September 30th, 2025.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protam Chamberlain-Krengga, supported by Councilmember Eric Sangal that we approve the nomination, the appointment of Tina Katron to the Animal Control Appeal Board for the term expiring September 30th, 2025. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes, motion carries.
Second one, Charter Revision Committee. I'd like to move the appointment of Tim Burns and the appointment of Lori Evans. Amendment to Tim Burns to the Charter Revision Committee for the term expiring April 30th, 2025. And the appointment of Lori Evans for the term expiring April 30th, 2024.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protam Chamberlain-Krengga, supported by Councilmember Brooks, that we approve the appointments of Tim Burns and Lori Evans to the Charter Revision Committee. Mr. Burns for term expiring April 30th, 2025. And Ms. Evans for the term expiring April 30th, 2024. Any discussion? Vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Motion carries. At the conclusion of this public agenda, we will recess and move into the council boardroom for the closed session, where I expect that. Next up is I4 Budget Amendment and Standard Purchasing Resolution 5 Pump Replacement at the Troy. That'll be introduced by our recreation director, Brian Ghul. Good evening, Brian.
Evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you is a request for a budget amendment to the Troy Family Aquatic Center Capital Fund in the amount of $125,000 for replacement of the pumps at the aquatic center that were previously approved for repairs back in December. When removing the pumps, it was found that the deterioration of the pumps is significant, and it would be cheaper and more reliable to replace them. The total amount, there's a not to exceed amount of $225,000 for this project. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions from council? Councilmember Abraham?
What is the expected life of these pumps?
They should last five, easily five to 10 years before they would need to be rebuilt down the road. So we should get at least five to 10 years out of them.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brooks, did you have a question also?
No, I was just pointing.
Oh, you were just pointing.
Just letting you know.
Mayor Protam Chamberlain-Krengga?
Just remind me, in case I missed it, are these the original pumps that we're replacing? Or had they been replaced before?
They've been rebuilt numerous times, but they are the original pumps. They've just been rebuilt over and over. And the parts that they used to rebuild them are now too far gone.
Someone like to move the resolution? Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move I4 Budget Amendment and Standard Purchasing Resolution 5 Pump Replacement at the Troy Family Aquatic Center as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Eric Sangal, supported by Councilmember Brooks, that we approve I4 Budget Amendment and Standard Purchasing Resolution 5 Pump Replacement at the Troy Family Aquatic Center as. Any discussion? All right, the vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Motion carries. We thank all of those residents willing to serve on our boards and committees and look forward to their continued service or new service. That concludes city council appointments this evening. Next up is I2 Board and Committee nominations. I have no mayoral nominations this evening. And my, my understanding is there are no city council nominations either. So we move on to I3, which is a request for closed session. All moved, be it resolved, that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15-point, HMCL 15.243G as printed in the agenda packet.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilmember Abraham, that we approve I3 Request for Closed Session as read into the record and printed in the agenda. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Motion carries. At the conclusion of this public agenda, we will recess and move into the council boardroom for the closed session, where I expect that. Next up is I4 Budget Amendment and Standard Purchasing Resolution 5 Pump Replacement at the Troy Family Aquatic Center as. Any discussion? All right, the vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Brian. That concludes regular business this evening. Next up is the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull an item from the consent agenda for future further discussion? Councilmember Abraham?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed.
all items on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Erickson-Galt?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes, sorry. Motion carries. If you're here on a consent agenda item this evening, all have been approved. Next up are memorandums and future council agenda items. I believe we'll be having that public hearing at our next meeting. I guess that would normally be announced right here, but well, proper notice will go out, further notice will go out. We move on to public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. No one has signed up, so no need for reply. There are no council referrals this evening, so we move on to reports. Anybody on council have a comment regarding the reports? All right, we move on to council comments. There's only five of us here. It's very quiet, huh? Is that one? Okay. All right. So next we move on to public comment for items on or not on the agenda for members of the public outside of Troy. We have one person signed up this evening, it's Matt Dargay. Please come forward. You have three minutes when the, can you do it in three minutes? You've got a laptop, it's very exciting, all right. When you get to, the timer's here, when you have, the yellow light goes on, you have one minute left and then the red light, it stops.
Cool, thank you. Good evening. My name is Matt Dargay. I live at 415 South Crooks in Claussen, although my GPS, I live in Troy sometimes. And I serve as Legislative Director for State Representative Sharon McDonald. Every few months, either Rep. McDonald or I plan on attending Troy City Council meetings to provide updates on our work in Lansing. It's been three months, three very busy months on the job so far, and we already have lots of updates. Her committee assignments are higher education, behavioral health, energy, transportation, where she serves as vice chair, and families, children, and seniors. She is an especially good legislator to reach out to with thoughts or ideas about any of those issues. She has also recently begun working on moving legislation of her own by working with folks from across the political spectrum. One of her efforts, a bill called Justice for Ally, is named for Troy resident Ally Hayes. If passed, the law would protect vulnerable adults from online sexual victimization. Representative McDonald will be introducing the bill tomorrow. And we would love to have the support of Troy residents and civic officials when the bill is referred to committee. Starting next week, Team McDonald will have its two-week-long legislative spring break, which we plan to spend going out into the community and hearing from residents about the issues that matter most to them. We'll be going door-to-door and holding public events to get as much input from residents as possible. Our next community conversation will be taking place on Monday, April 3rd, at the Royal Oak Senior Center. And the following month, we'll be holding a town hall on issues affecting senior citizens. But whether or not you see us during spring break, please do not hesitate to reach out to us at sharonmcdonald@house.mi.gov. Again, to read that into the record, that's sharonmcdonald@house.mi.gov. We want to hear from all you folks on council about how we can work together to serve the residents of Troy. And we want to hear from Troy's residents about their thoughts and concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate you coming forward this evening. Please let the representative know she's welcome as well, and she can even have more than three minutes in an earlier part of the meeting for some back and forth. I just want to say quickly, Justice for Ally has been brought up by now Rep. McDonald, Representative Cooper brought up, and it actually started with Representative Howrillack. So it's been a long time. I hope this is the time that it actually passes. That concludes public comment for items on or not on the agenda. City Manager Miller.
Sorry, Mayor. Just wanted to remind everyone that it actually is very common for state-elected officials to come and do a special presentation, a specific spot on the agenda. And I'm not sure if the gentleman was here early in the meeting when that happened, but